Welcome, everyone, to the Inglewood City Council Regular Meeting on Monday, February 4, 2019. And we will have a call to order. This call to order will have an invocation by Councilmember Wink, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Heavenly Father, grant us, your servants, the ability to consider all matters before us with honor to your grace. Let us tonight act as an expression of your will and in the best interest of Inglewood's future. Our goal is not to control, but to serve the people. This we ask in thy name, amen. And tonight, I would also ask that we preserve a moment of silence for our Inglewood police officer who passed this weekend. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk take the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Member Sierra?
Present.
Member Berantine?
Present.
Member Costa?
Present.
Member Martinez?
Present.
Mayor Protem Russell?
Present.
Member Wink?
Present.
Mayor Olson?
Present.
All seven present.
Thank you. To take consideration of the minutes of the previous session of City Council meeting January 22, 2019.
I move to approve the minutes from the council meeting from January 22, 2019.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Second. Thank you. Any concerns, changes? Not? Please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you. Agenda number six is recognition of scheduled public comment. The deadline to sign up to speak on the scheduled public comment is Wednesday by 5:00 p.m. prior to the meeting through the city clerk's office, and only those who meet this deadline can speak in this section. This is an opportunity for the public to address City Council. There is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue. Please limit your presentation to five minutes. Written materials for presentation to council may be submitted to the city clerk at my left as a speaker approaches the podium, and a USB port is available for public presentation. Just add one comment. At the end of the seventh agenda of the recognition of unscheduled, we will have one council member responding to the public, particularly in finding council requests. And I'm going to start with Councilmember Costa tonight. So first up tonight is Ms. C.A. Dickerson, an Inglewood resident here to address council, no topic given.
Good evening. C.A. Dickerson, 2835 South Pennsylvania. The Code Enforcement Advisory Committee is comprised of private, unelected volunteer citizens with limited responsibilities and little authority. The committee has been charged with various misdeeds that have no foundation in truth or fact, much less logic. CAC has accomplished a great deal in the last year, including the clear lines of communication we have opened with the public on behalf of and in collaboration with code enforcement and the citizens. And we have reviewed many codes, three of which have been voted on as needing revision, and two of which were sent through to the city attorney as instructed and has been done in the past. We respect each other, we respect our liaisons, and have had many citizens speak before us. Even though the public forum we host for citizens to express their concerns with code enforcement activities and enforcement has been overwhelmingly critical of code enforcement, we have helped them have a positive interaction with us and code enforcement and help them achieve resolution of their issues. The Articles and Posting of Codes has encouraged many citizens to address issues in a positive manner. The pause, or as you are calling it now, a hiatus, a forced hiatus, is ill-conceived and chilling to functioning of any board or committee and will serve no purpose or alleviate any problem because there is no problem. The stated issues, which have no basis in fact, logic, or truth, will not be served or resolved at all, and certainly not by a forced hiatus. There are a lot of contradictions in code, and even the police and code enforcement and the city attorney admit there are problems in enforcement and a great disconnect and confusion between various codes, which are overly broad or undefined language, and what is criminal and what is civil. And feedback from citizens and police and code enforcement noted that police and/or code enforcement won't ticket because they claim the tickets won't be prosecuted by the city attorneys responsible. The city attorney has also noted serious problems with the enforcement and nuisance provisions of Title 15, and a year ago asked the advisory committee not to deal with this until she's had a chance to go over it. What is stated as issues are actually council issues, not CAC's. The charter only prohibits council from interfering with staff, but there is no punishment or consequences, and CAC has not in any way, shape, or form interfered with or directed staff, even if the charter applies to unelected volunteer citizens. Making recommendations to the city manager, if done at all, is the process. It is not a violation. Setting priorities is not a violation. If done at all, it is merely noting the codes that citizens and code enforcement have determined are the most important to be enforced. Keeping order in our meetings is necessary and set by Bob's Rules and council policy. Would you really honor the hard work we have done supporting citizens and code enforcement in achieving code enforcement's goals of unbiased, fair, and voluntary compliance, and not interfere with CAC, and use our hard work and knowledge to help you resolve the municipal code problems and address citizens' concerns with code enforcement? CAC committee members are uniquely qualified, being so close to the problems, and have the knowledge and foresight to help council resolve the disconnects and contradictions in municipal code. Reconsider this forced hiatus. At least give CAC a fair and real hearing. It is not just unprecedented, but wholly illogical and without foundation or fact, much less truth, to force a hiatus on any committee. Consider that you will be signaling to citizens that you are continuing to ignore their concerns. After all, code enforcement, whether proactive, reactive, or not being done at all, and not being done in a fair and unbiased manner, is the number-one complaint of citizens. A forced hiatus on CAC, and you will prove you don't care about citizens' concerns and further discourage citizen involvement. CAC has scheduled out a number of communication activities, and we have planned on several more code reviews. Don't force this hiatus and prevent CAC from fulfilling the responsibilities and duties that were set for us 33 years ago.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink has a question for you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Dickerson, thank you very much for coming tonight and sharing this information with us. Are you aware that per Chapter 32, neither the City Council, its members, or its committees...
It doesn't say its members.
Shall, one minute, please, shall either publicly or privately attempt the dictation, direction, or interference with any officer or employee. Such interference is misconduct of office. This is in the packet that was put forth last week in advance.
Councilmember Wink, I'm going to ask you to pose a question.
I did. I asked her if she was aware.
I am aware of it, and the title of it says "Acts Specifically Forbidden to Council." And where it says deemed misconduct, there are no consequences, and that says council members who attempt dictation will be deemed misconduct. It doesn't say who deems it, and there are no consequences for this. It doesn't say committees. It says committee, and it quite clearly indicates that it's a committee made of council members.
Councilmember Wink has a second question.
I have one more question. Thank you. We'll take up the response to that later. Ms. Dickerson, would you kindly provide the council via the city clerk a report citing these code enforcement claims are indeed the number-one complainant among our 36,000 citizens? You made that statement, and I'd love to see the numbers so we can move forward.
Well, that's been presented as public information to council many times, and the most recent...
Thank you so much.
...forums were that.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next person up is Mr. J.J. Marjada, an Inglewood resident who will address council. Topic is not given. Mr. Marjada is not here. All right. We move on to Mr. John Dahl, an Inglewood, actually someone who owns a home in Inglewood, will address city council regarding sewage backup on 1300 East Bates Parkway. Mr. Dahl will state his address and...
He's not a resident of the city of Inglewood. My mother was a resident of the city of Inglewood. She owned a house on 1310 East Bates Parkway. She recently passed away, and I'm the personal representative of her estate. I live in Houston, Texas. The address, 8315 Hunter's Creek Drive, Houston, Texas, 77024.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for allowing me some time to speak tonight. I wanted to address this ongoing problem with the city's sanitary sewer in the 1300 block of East Bates Parkway. My mother's owned the home since 1972. In 1964, my mother was widowed and left to raise three children on her own. She returned to school at University of Denver and got her master's in special education with a special education teacher at the city of Littleton, till she retired in the 1980s. She saved enough money in 1972 to buy a permanent residence for herself and for children to raise us at 1310 East Bates Parkway in the city of Inglewood. And the home was her pride and joy. She was a proud resident of the city of Inglewood and loved the services that the city of Inglewood offered her. From 1972 to 2015, we never had any issues with any of the city's services. In 2015, I received a phone call from my sister, who lives at the residence, who was helping take care of my mother because she was getting older, that the sewage was backing into the basement. After calling plumbers in the city, it was discovered that the city's sanitary sewer had clogged in the alleyway, and the sewage from the neighbors' homes was coming into the basement of the house. The city of Inglewood contracted with Balfour at the time, who came out and remediated the site. They did flood cuts on the wall, they sanitized the basement, they replaced tile and damage. I flew up from Houston at personal expense to remove all the family possessions from the basement, and then at a later date, my brother and his wife came from New York, took time off from their work. I, and along with my wife, came from Houston and took off time from our work to remove, to go through all the items, the personal items we'd removed from the home. We removed three Home Depot Bagsters we had to dispose of, of personal possessions, memories, and things that were handed down from my grandparents that were damaged in the flood and had fecal and excrement on them, and we couldn't no longer keep them. So we disposed of those. At the time, the city said that the approach that they were going to take was to monitor the city sewer system in that area more, do more roto-rooting, do more scoping of it, and we hoped the problem was solved. In 2017, there was a smaller backup. Fortunately, it didn't require remediation. But we were advised that the city's program was still in place, and maybe the problem with the sewer was the line that we had from the house to the city's system. So at the expense of $9,000, the family replaced the sewer system from the house to the city sewer, and we felt maybe now the problem's solved. At the age of 92, my mother passed away Thanksgiving week of 2018. While she was getting older, we had to unfortunately move her from the house because we couldn't provide the medical care she needed. Whenever we visited her, she always wanted to return to her home at 1310 East Bates Parkway. After coming home from her viewing on November 27, we expected to keep memories or share memories of my mother and to try to make what we could at a Thanksgiving weekend. Unfortunately, we came home to the residence to find sewage backing up in the basement. My brother and I and my nephew used wet/dry vac, and we figured we took about over 200 gallons of fecal water and other items removed from the basement. It's raw sewage, basically. Our wives ran it to Home Depot to get pumps, mops, and other things to help sanitize the basement. After three hours of work, the city responded, and there was a blockage in the city sewer behind the house for the third time. As I mentioned, Balfour was responded, and they did very little work. They cut about maybe a square foot of drywall off the walls. I came back out and looked at the residence, and there was still fecal matter on the walls and had to call the city. They sent Balfour back up. They came out and they removed more of the walls and did some other work. I do have issues with Balfour because they damaged a sewage vent pipe there, and the shower in the basement, the pan, was filled with feces, and the water got underneath it, and they won't remove that pan, and I don't know why. Erin Robinson and Dorothy Hargrove have been very helpful. Mayor, I know you called me after this happened, and I appreciate that because I know you're out of the country. It's been a great expense to the family, and I know it's a great expense to the city to have to continue to do this. This is something that a family shouldn't have to go through and most don't face. The residence is still occupied, and this is a health and safety issue for the occupants. My sister and nephew live there. We haven't asked anything of the city in return.
Mr. Dahl, unfortunately, your time is up, but I bet we have some questions that could get out what I think you really are... Yeah, finish up, and then we have a couple people who are going to ask you questions.
What I wanted to ask of the city is that I don't think the inspection program is working, and I believe there's fundamentally something changed in that sewer system since 2015. I'd like to have an engineering or cold-eye reviews of that system so we don't have to go through this again. Thank you.
Great. Stay there. You're going to probably have more chance to give us some more information. Councilmember Martinez has a question for you.
Thank you for coming tonight, and I'm very sorry for your loss. I just want to clarify one thing that you said. I want to make sure I heard you correctly. You said your family had to pay to replace the connection from your sewer to the city line?
Yes.
And then it backed up after that again?
Correct. That was in 2017, 2018, the sewer clogged again, and it backed into the basement.
After you fixed it?
After we fixed it.
You fixed it.
We thought, I mean, we've done, as residents, we've done everything to the sewage system in the house that we possibly can. There's not really any updating that we can do anymore, so the problem has been with the city sewer clogging.
Thank you for clarifying.
Councilmember Wink has a question.
Thanks, Mayor. And then, Mr. Dahl, following the replacement of your residential system meeting the city system, once the backup occurred, you incurred the $9,000-plus cost in repair.
Yeah, the family paid for it.
Correct. So what happened then subsequently to your home?
Up subsequent to that in 2018, when we came home from my mother's viewing, that was when the city...
All right. Very good. Thank you very much.
...backing up into the basement again.
Thank you.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. So the 27, or I guess it would have been the 2018 incident was the last time that had occurred?
Yeah.
Or has there been a more recent one?
November 27. The basement still hasn't been remediated. I mean, it's been cleaned, but Balfour still has work to do. They disappeared for two months. I had to call the city to get them to show up again. The quality of work they did compared to what they did in 2015 has been very subpar, I think.
As far as you...
I have photographs of the feces on the wall that they said was sanitized.
As far as you know, is that work scheduled to be conducted with Balfour?
Well, after talking to Erin in the city services, he's got Balfour coming back out, so he contacted them and got them to come back out, and they're supposed to start work again. But I don't know what they're going to do with some of the items that haven't been remediated yet.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
I have one last question, which you've already asked us to keep moving this forward for you, but what is your biggest ask of us tonight beyond your own personal?
I think that there's something fundamentally changed in that sewer system from when we lived in the house, bought the house in 1972 to 2015. I think something happened in 2015, and I think there's something that's repeatedly causing a backup, and the city's inspections, increased inspections and roto-rooting hasn't solved it. I believe there needs to be either engineering or cold-eyes review of that section and see if it needs to be replaced or somehow repaired so that we don't have to go through this again. That's what I'd ask the city to do.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next up is Mr. Jerry Walker, an Inglewood resident here to address council regarding city council in the city of Inglewood to be sued or can be sued for violating the city charter in the Colorado revised statutes.
Jerry Walker, 4180 South Pearl Street, Inglewood. Howdy, council. How's things going? I listened to you guys in study session last week talking about the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee, and it dawned on me that most of you know absolutely nothing about what we do, but that really doesn't surprise me. What we do is we actually go out to people's houses. People in this committee actually go out to people's houses to help solve code problems. And that makes me worry, because if you're going to give us 12 weeks of vacation, I contacted my financial advisor, and he told me that we could get through that 12 weeks without the amount of pay that the city gives me for going out to these people's houses. That's a zero, in case you didn't get it. But I'm worried about the vacuum that's going to occur. Now, you're sitting there going, "What the heck is a vacuum?" Well, if you take code enforcement out of the play, and there's nobody below us, then it's going to be the people above us who are going to have to go out to these houses and solve these code problems. You're going to have to go out and sit in the kitchen at night and talk to these people, and then you're going to have to fight tooth and nail with Dave Lewis because he's going to have seven excuses why it can't be done. The trash cans can't be moved because everybody's handicapped. The truck can't go down the alley because it's not wide enough. There is a dumpster back there, but don't let that bother you. That truck must be much smaller than the garbage truck. So if I get a call once we get on our vacation, our 12-week vacation, I'm just going to give them the telephone numbers for city council, and these people can call you, and you can do the job that you tell us we're not doing, okay? So I don't see it happening, but, you know, I have been contacted by some citizens here in Inglewood and in Arapahoe County. As a matter of fact, I think it's as gone as high as the state government about oversight, about perhaps maybe a civilian committee just to check on what's going on here in this city. And I mean, seriously, check everything that's going on as far as following the code and following everything else. And by the way, from your discussion this afternoon, code enforcement says that they put out 900 door tags during the last snow. If you will walk east from Broadway on Rat Cliff, three days after it snows, every time we have a snow, you'll find that over 50% of those sidewalks are not shovelled. How do I know that? I walk it. You guys got any questions?
I see none. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Next up is Ms. Vicki Hoffman, here to address council, no topic given.
Vicki Hoffman, 4630 South Bannock. Tonight, I'm here to talk a little bit about something that happened to me on Friday. I went to join, to go to an EAF meeting, and I was told that there was no EAF meeting. I was told that twice, when in fact, there was, that I did finally get to go sit in on. I was also told that day that the drain of the Tacoma-Bannock alley had been cleaned. It hadn't. I had a nine-minute conversation with Tom Brennan today. It wasn't very pretty. I told him I had pictures, that the vac truck did not take anything out. So my point is, is I really don't like to have to call people out on these things, but I'm finding that staff isn't always up and up, unfortunately. I'd also like to thank Dave Costa and Lorette Berantine for responding to my email to come meet with Calibre. They responded to me, saying they couldn't attend. Mayor Protem did attend, and the rest of you never got a response from, so unfortunately, that really kind of isn't acceptable. I might also was directed to inquire as to why the mayor didn't have to go through metal detectors, and I was told to ask the city attorney by Chief Collins as to why that's okay and why the rest of us have to. I also had emailed you a couple of weeks ago asking for Elaine Holtz to receive a public apology. I still have not heard that. I'm still embarrassed by myself that I didn't say anything that night that that happened. So the communication that I gave you is from Eric Keck regarding the July 24 storm response. I highlighted a lot of inconsistencies. I do have a couple extra if anybody here wants to look at them. The estimated rainfall, or rainfall that day, estimated, was 1.4 inches. It's in the back of this packet by the National Weather Service, not two inches. There's a lot of inconsistencies in this report, and I can tell you everything about every drain probably in the city. The city does not have a plan. A plan should be, you should be asking the police for this plan. Somebody is in charge of emergency operations. And what worries me right now is that we are getting to the monsoon season. Our alley right now is currently impassable. You can't drive through it. Worries me if there's, you know, needs to be an ambulance to go down there. Apparently, we have no intergovernmental agreements. That's a huge problem, and that's why I believe that we never had a response after the flood. I never saw anybody from Arapahoe County. I never saw anybody from Red Cross. Never saw anybody from a church. Nobody. There was nobody until Rita came through. There's also states in here that the city's emergency operations and continuity of operation plans needs to be refreshed. There is no plan. Seriously, refreshed. Also says in here that once they determined what was broken from the flood, from the storm, and it was not on the people's side of the disaster, the people's side is the human side, not the stuff, because in the reality is, when we all die, we don't need the stuff. We need our lives. And when I know I die, all this stuff in the world isn't going to matter. So I'm going to continue to come here and to tell you that this is not okay. Code enforcement within the public and private alleys needs to be increased. As many conditions that led to the clogged drains were due to the fact that homeowners have not been diligent with keeping the alleys clean and clear. That is, that's an insult. So there's plenty of things in here. I hope you take the time to read it because I, you know, felt like this really needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink has a question for you.
I beg your pardon. That was on from the last time.
Okay. Mayor Protem Russell does.
Yes. Would, the question that I have for you is, you have asked me if we could have flood victims come and speak to the city.
Yes.
Is that one thing that you want? Is an opportunity for the victims to come and speak to council about their side?
I think that it needs to happen. We have people that are having lost, you know, I know one couple that's lost, they both lost their jobs because of the flood. They're having marital issues. People aren't receiving counseling. I think that people need to be heard. I really do. You know, it was a traumatic event, and somebody needs to address that. In order for... You know, it was a traumatic event, and somebody needs to address that in order for people to move on.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Barantine, I think you had your line on. Are you, is that a mistake? It was before. Okay. Councilmember Wink?
You were first. Barantine was first.
Go ahead, Councilmember Wink. Thank you.
Ms. Hoffman, thank you for sharing yet again with us tonight. Do you feel that an emergency manager might be good for the city? I know it's come up several times, and a couple of members of our council have voted it down. Are you in favor of having an emergency city manager for the city of Inglewood?
Well, right now, the police is in charge of emergency operations.
Do you feel that an emergency city manager might be beneficial in future cases?
I think somebody needs to be responsible. I don't know who that person might be.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Barantine. You had come before and said that there was a report that was already on the website for Calibre, and this was prior to the meeting with you. Did you have an opportunity to clear that up, that they had already posted a report, or are they still taking information?
I think that they're still interviewing people. At the time that I met with them last week, they'd only talked to five people, and my impression is, is that they only want to do floodproofing, which is putting makeup on the situation.
Okay. And my second question is, you're correct. On the website, it is listed that the police department, specifically the fire marshal is in charge, is currently listed as our emergency manager with our, may think inadequate plan, but we do have a plan listed on the website, and there was one at the time of this incident. Have you received the report from the fire marshal from the police department on their assessment?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Mr. Doug Coen, an Inglewood resident here to address counsel regarding historic preservation.
Good evening, mayor and council. Doug Coen, 3051 South Marion Street. I'm going to talk about the Ida family. I mentioned them about a year and a half ago, a Japanese immigrant family. After the attack on Pearl Harbor in 1941, there were very hostile feelings towards people of Japanese descent. The politicians, most Americans, the newspapers, the radio, magazines like Time &amp; Life were all anti-Japanese and all wanted something done. This month is the 77th anniversary of one of the most evil actions ever taken by the government of this country. President Franklin Roosevelt's executive order 9066. On February 19, 1942, Roosevelt signed the executive order authorizing the forced relocation of tens of thousands of men and women and children of Japanese descent from the West Coast and other areas near military installations, depriving them of their rights as citizens of this country. Most were citizens; those not were legal residents. He seems to have forgotten his words from 10 years earlier. The only thing we have to fear is fear itself. They discovered sometimes you have to fear the government too. Roosevelt's order affected 117,000 people of Japanese descent, two-thirds of whom were native-born. There were also some Italian and German-Americans rounded up. There was almost no resistance to this order. In Colorado and Inglewood, there was resistance. Governor Ralph Carr, a Republican, was one of the resistors. He invited those being displaced to come to Colorado. The Ida family moved to Inglewood in 1931. The family had immigrated from Japan earlier. They had become citizens. There were eight children, four boys and four girls. Harry Ida was the oldest. They were farmers on Dr. John Simon's farm just west of the Platte River on Oxford. They lived at 1400 West Oxford where the new apartments and the Opera Colorado belliger. They sold produce at a stand on Oxford and Santa Fe. Things were going well until December 7. The Idas were at the Gothic Theater and got mean looks and trash talking as they were leaving. Then they heard the news about Pearl Harbor. In February of '42, the federal agents began rounding up the Japanese and sending them to internment camps. When the feds came to take away the Ida family, the most extraordinary thing happened. Dr. Simon, the neighbors, the business people along Broadway, and the local politicians met the federal agents at the train station, and they told them that the Ida family was part of Inglewood's family, and they told the agents they were not going to take them away. Our Inglewood forefathers firmly told the feds to get back on the train. The agents got back on the train, and the Ida family stayed. Our forefathers and Governor Carr fused to cooperate with evil. Governor Carr spoke out stridently against the impairment of Japanese Americans as inhuman and unconstitutional. In 1942, the first Japanese Americans arrived at the Amachi Internment Camp in Colorado. They were threatened with violence by the locals. Carr confronted the mob, and he told them, "If you harm them, you must harm me first." The people listened. Carr merely remembered what others had forgotten, that Japanese Americans are Americans and should be treated as such. His opposition to Roosevelt's order cost him his political future. Carr and Simon and the people of Inglewood were the quintessential Americans embodying the spirit of individualism and descent that gave birth to this country. Carr stood by the Japanese-American community in opposition to fear and the angry public. With that stand, he defended the Constitution and the Democrat principles it embodies. Ralph Carr died in 1950. Harry Ida's two younger brothers joined the military and fought in the war. They both went on to start their own produce businesses and eventually moved to Longmont. I urge you all who are here tonight to be like Dr. Simon and Governor Carr and the people of Inglewood. Be lights in the darkness of bigotry and hatred. Don't follow the mob. Choose to stand up against the evil in whatever form it takes and defend the rule of law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coen. No one has any questions. Thank you. Our next item is a recognition of unscheduled public comment, and I'm not going to repeat everything I said the last time. Other than that, we expect people to be respectful in addressing counsel, and you'll have three minutes during this time. This is the time when you sign up out in the foyer for this, and council members may ask questions. So the first person up tonight is Judy Dunlop, here to speak about CEAC.
Judy Dunlop, 2935 South Acoma. I'm here tonight to discuss the few items that I believe the citizens of Inglewood can benefit from through my observations and involvement. I attended the study session on Monday, January 28, 2019, to hear more about a proposed pause being considered to be placed on the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee, or CEAC as it is called. I was seated in the room, and I was straining my ears to hear the dialogue. There were many problems with the audio, and there was an apparent inability for some council members to maneuver the microphone effectively, and didn't seem to have a clue that no one in the room could hear it, let alone anyone trying to access on audio later. I spoke to a few people last week that attempted to access the audio and experienced the same problems that I incurred. I would ask that both situations be investigated, and if more training is needed on how to use a microphone, then I would hope that that is accomplished. I felt it was important for me to address this issue about the pause on the CEAC group, so I wrote a letter to the council on Friday, February 1, 2019. To date, I have only received two responses, and more importantly, as was also discussed at the study session, Mayor Olson made it sound like citizen communication would be taken seriously and responses could be expected. I received a phone call from my District 1 council member Sierra from an email that I sent him prior to this letter. I appreciated the response, but not the results. I am particularly disappointed with the decision by my District 1 representative to propose a pause to the regular meeting schedules of the CEAC group. I am equally discouraged by the other council members that support this idea that seemed to appear like a magic trick out of thin air. Councilmember Sierra, as a junior liaison, fails to have a unified voice with his own counterpart senior liaison on the CEAC, Mayor Protem Rita Russell. I heard nothing tangible at the study session that would precipitate this type of action. Mayor Olson said she listened to past audio of the CEAC meetings and yet vacillated on her assessment while going back and forth on a pause, to no pause, to a reset, to a pause. Now I see on the agenda tonight it is called a hiatus. I have spoken at past CEAC meetings and one recently. I did not come with a timed speech, and so I gave full latitude to the chair to cut me off if I went long. He graciously did, and then I answered questions from the group. There is an important situation being used as a precedent regarding public response at a CEAC meeting that has become both emotional and political. In one of my commission meetings, the citizen forum was left off of the agenda, which had been a permanent item. However, a citizen showed up that could have provided relevant input but was never called on and listened attentively to the meeting. Citizens are invited to attend and discuss relative, relevant issues, but no one has the right to disrupt the meeting or ultimately be disrespectful of any board, commission, or committee.
Ms. Dunlop, your time is up.
I ask that you vote no to a pause of the CEAC group and give them help, not be a hindrance.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Thank you. Next up is Ms. Colleen Moore, here to speak about CEAC as well.
My name's Colleen Moore, 4175 South Acoma Street in Inglewood, Colorado. And I would like to echo what Ms. Dunlop said on the audio quality of your meetings. It was very, very hard to hear. To go back and unwind what's happened and why this hiatus is even being considered. I think clear expectations are important, and the city owes its citizens clear direction on our community's rules and what's required of us to be citizens and to hold up our end of the deal. The municipal code is the main way the city communicates its expectations to its citizens, and objectively, Inglewood could do a much better job with the muni code. Poorly written codes lead to poor policy. Poor policy leads to the failure of government to address the basic needs of the citizenry. It leads to a lack of enforcement of the laws that are already on the books, and it will eventually decay both the physical city and the relationships of the people who live there. Many people in our community are frustrated with the lack of response from the code enforcement department within the Inglewood Police Department, and I was one of them. And I got involved with the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee to help fix it. Now, we're being told that the committee is being put on hiatus, and I don't fully understand why that is. So I did go back, and I did look into the reasons that were cited in your study sessions and council meetings, but this issue is a multifaceted problem, and as the public comments show tonight, it indicates that the problem is across the city departments. It's not just code enforcement. It's parks, it's the sewer, sewer line, sewer treatment folks. The city doesn't know what's going on. We can't get information or answers from any of the staff. So I would encourage you to better define what council wants from the city commissions and boards, but not at the detriment of the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee. And there also needs to be a reckoning of some sort with the Inglewood staff because layers upon layers of conflicting direction, poorly written laws, and a general level of apathy has infected our city government, and I encourage you to address that.
Thank you. There are no questions for you. Thank you for coming. Next is Mr. Paul Skazinski, here to speak about ADUs.
My name is Paul Skazinski. I reside at 4260 South Eladdy Street in Inglewood. Honorable mayor, Inglewood city council members, city attorney, city clerk, acting city manager, and other dignitaries. As most of you know, I have been waiting for four years for a favorable decision regarding the proposal to allow accessory dwelling units to be built on certain residential properties in Inglewood, including my own. The decision was finally made, and on the surface, it seems favorable to me, except that we have our home in a family trust, which is technically a limited liability company. It is my contention that neither the members of the Planning and Funding Commission who wrote the words, nor the members of city council who voted on those words, intended to have it applied to properties being held in a family trust. Yet, the city attorney has interpreted the wording to do just that. It would be a credit to city council to correct the wording, so it will say what council intended to say. Where the wording reads "corporations and for-profit business partnerships," it should read "for-profit corporations and for-profit business partnerships." That might be all that's needed. Or to be more specific, a sentence could be added to state clearly, this restriction does not apply to the properties being held in a family trust. In fact, a portion of the wording and city attorney's interpretation states, quote, "Business partnerships that own real property otherwise eligible for an ADU that can provide verification that they are not-for-profit, including filing title limitations, are permitted to construct an ADU." So why can my not-for-profit LLC not also provide verification that we are not-for-profit? It is considered making that change, as I believe it will more accurately reflect what you intended to vote on already. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Skazinski? Seeing none. Thank you for coming forward. Next up is Mr. Stephen Ward, here to speak about truth about budgets, about budget.
My name is Stephen Ward. I reside at 4620 South Delaware Street. I'm here tonight to address a couple of things, one of which is some statements that were made right here on the record by other citizens within the last two months regarding the city budget. The primary reason why I came is because two people alleged that the city had lost over $8 million in its investment portfolio. There is no factual basis whatsoever, as the finance director has stated, for that allegation. Those types of allegations are incredibly destructive to the public. Indeed, our investments, as you saw in the council request, are held mostly in bonds. We make somewhere around 2% annually on the investment portfolio. There is something in that investment portfolio on the monthly statement that says unrealized losses. That is the loss that the city would take if we sold the bonds today, if we liquidated the entire 50-plus-million-dollar portfolio. We're not doing that. We're not going to do that. We have worse things to worry about than a $700,000 loss if we are ever forced to do that. So I am here tonight to stick up for the competent financial management of the staff that serves our city. When allegations like this are made, often what happens is the council request comes up, and it's put in, and then it's returned in writing to council and published on the website. That's good. That's how I found the information, but I think it's inadequate. I really would like to hear some of the allegations that are being leveled on a regular basis against staff addressed from the dais in a follow-up. The other allegation that was leveled against staff about two months ago in December was in regards to an emergency call, and it's a delicate subject, but the facts that were presented from the podium do not match the facts of the case. And there was a report issued. Two things particularly stuck with me. The first is that it was alleged that it was a 20-minute response time. That is not correct, and the city has records to establish that that is not correct. Actual response time, six minutes. The second allegation that was addressed is something that was stated by one of the people who spoke, quote, "I don't think they care about Inglewood. I don't work for the city of Inglewood. I'm a resident of the city of Inglewood. I don't work for the city of Denver. I have no affiliation with either organization other than living here, but I've had the Denver Fire Department at my house. To say that they don't care about the city of Inglewood is horrible, horrible. I don't agree. I've used their services twice, once in Denver, once in Inglewood, in response, same level of care. That's all I have."
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you for coming forward. Next is Mr. Scott Marsh, here to speak about CEAC.
Before I get started, I just want to say that I'm here speaking for...
Could you give your name and your address, please?
Yeah, my name is Scott Marsh. My address is 4831 South Washington Street. I'm speaking for Mr. Dale Harris, who was unable to make it here tonight, so I'm reading this statement on his behalf. My argument here is to respectfully request the city council not engage or not enforce a pause or a recess on the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee. A few years ago, I believe it was the end of 2015 or perhaps the beginning of 216, there was a public forum meeting for the Liquor and Marijuana Board for public discussion about a proposed marijuana shop in the 5,000 block of South Federal. That meeting became rather raucous. The neighborhood's citizens against the store were at least seven times more than those in favor. It was a loud and somewhat aggressive scene. Bottom line is that the liquor board rubber-stamped approval for that store. That committee clearly was not public-friendly and was pretty blatant about it. City council at the time did nothing to that committee, and I believe was not even an issue for them that the neighborhood was not listened to nor properly served. Today, I discuss a different committee, the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee. I am a member, and this is Dale Harris, I am a member of that committee. I believe our committee has found a way for the public to bring forward their concerns that code enforcement is not answering their concerns. We don't get rooms full of irate citizens. We, in the public forum part of our monthly meeting, do listen to those who want help dealing with a code enforcement issue. Our chairman's solution is pretty simple. Make sure the citizen understands the written code, document what has happened and who they talked to and worked with in code enforcement, make a video or photos of the suspicious, suspected violation, use social media or a city council meeting to politely make your case. These steps seem to solve the huge majority of the miscues and communication problems. Because of one citizen's issue with our committee, what I consider personal issue with our committee and with one or more of its members, city council is now taking about stopping this committee's meetings for a month, maybe more. I don't believe city council can correct any perceived problems in a month, two months, or even six months. I have watched this council for years, and nothing can be done quickly or effectively done. I ask you to let this committee continue the fantastic work it's been doing, work on challenges to its charter if you must, but do it methodically and correctly, not in knee-jerk fashion. Thank you for your attention to my concerns.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, we appreciate you coming forward. Next is Mr. Carl Unziger, here to speak about CEAC. Did I say that correctly?
Thank you, council. I would like to speak in favor of a hiatus for the Code Enforcement Advisor Committee. I've been on that committee for four years now, and I don't think that a break would be undue at this time, and primarily to address fundamental understandings and using this as an opportunity to bring about some of those understandings for the committee. In my four times there, I have seen relations with staff degrade and become more and more acrimonious. I've also seen growing frustration from the committee on a number of different answers regarding policies for getting things priorities and setting just how we go about adjusting the code. As we've heard, is not the easiest code to work with, and there are a lot of issues to be addressed. But just getting on to council's agenda and aligning our priorities, I think, is something that needs to be addressed and needs to happen. While you do not certainly set our agendas on the committee, if the things that we're prioritizing and the things we're discussing and the things that we are working on aren't ultimately going to end up on your agenda, then that's a lot of work wasted. I think, you know, whatever the outcome, I think a pause can be a very beneficial thing. It gives the space and the breadth to actually discuss and to bring these things about rather than trying to fix the engine on the plane while it flies. But regardless, I think whether or not the committee does want a hiatus, these things should be addressed on how we go about aligning our priorities better, aligning work with staff, both of the code enforcement officers, but also with the attorney, and making sure that the codes that we're working on ultimately get a vote in front of council. So I hope, you know, whatever you decide, that we continue to work towards a more beneficial working relationship. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Berantine has a question for you, if you're willing to entertain it.
I will.
How do you envision having a discussion about how to work on things if you don't meet?
So this is, I think, an opportunity for council to discuss amongst them to maybe correct or at least address some of these fundamental issues with the committee. As the committee itself to try and address these things, we have, we've tried, we've talked about it, these are, you know, made aware or well-known amongst the committee. And I think for us to do it would be to continue to work in a vacuum that doesn't have an appropriate outlet for decision or for progress. So I think this is something that the council should be bringing up.
You've had several members of your committee come up who are in disagreement with you and would prefer not to have a pause. Do you think that the council should include the committee in some conversation if there is a pause so that we can vet some of the issues, since there seems to be some disagreement amongst the committee that there is a problem?
Absolutely. I think this is a...
Thank you.
A pause would be a break from our standard meetings, but not a break from the opportunity to work with council during that time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next and last is Ms. Janice Brown, here to speak about Natura Obscura.
Janice Brown, 3808 South Elady. My husband and I visited Natura Obscura exhibit January 23, and we were thoroughly entertained. This interactive exhibit is well worth an hour of your time. There is so much to see that I'm sure I missed some things. We may want to go again. I believe Inglewood should be very proud of their alliance with the Museum of Outdoor Arts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no questions, thank you for coming. All right, this is a portion of our time where council member is going to respond, and councilmember Questa's been drafted to do that tonight. And council, if you think of other things, then save those until your council time at the end of the meeting to add in. So councilmember Questa, would you please respond as you feel need?
You bet. And I believe I have all of them recorded, and I did it in order, so I'll see if I can start with the CEAC. And that was Ms. Dickerson, Mr. Walker. Mr. Marsh, Mr. Unziger. All were here to address CEAC, and I may have looked over a couple of folks there as well. I believe our discussion started last week during the study session. It seemed to spill over into this study session this week, and it will continue tonight. I think that that's the second to the last item on our agenda this evening. And then, I think, as Mr. Unziger alluded to, the conversation's going to continue regardless of how this hiatus works out tonight or where the vote falls. I think that there's an overdue conversation between that board and council so that we can get this in order. So I think that this conversation is definitely still fluid, and I know everybody is looking for a better outcome on the other side of it once we get there. To Mr. Dahl, that is a, that's a hard story that you recounted for us here, and I certainly sympathize with you. And that is, that would be difficult for any homeowner, let alone one that lives in another state. So that is very challenging. I appreciate the very, very long time that your, that your mother was here in Inglewood as a resident and that now you have family members living there at this time. This would get to one of my council requests. He mentioned that it's at the 1310 East Base residence, but I wonder if there's other houses impacted in that neighborhood? And what my thought is, if we have Belfour going out to this particular residence to do work, are they going to other residences? What is the cost that is accumulating over time for us to keep sending a third-party company out there to make these repairs? What is the, is there a long-term problem that we're able to resolve? It sounds like 2015 was the trigger point and seems to be consistently occurring since then. So I'm hoping that, as a council request from myself, that we can get some more information Jan Brown, thank you for the comments on MOA. I visited myself and agreed that it was, it was, it was great. I enjoyed it. And Mr. Skazinski, I think it is worth reviewing again what you identified, and that was definitely one of the sticking points when we had our conversations of ADUs. I think the intention of the keeping LLCs at bay, and I think you hit the nail on the head, is that we don't want a lot of speculators or renters potentially using that as a dual rental with the both front and back property. That certainly was not intended to exclude folks that have a family trust there where there would still be that resonant in one of the two dwellings on the property. So that's something I'm sure the council would be happy to revisit. And Doug Cohn, I always appreciate your histories on Inglewood, and tonight's was especially good considering the times that we're in now. So that concludes it from you, mayor. Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for attending tonight.
Thank you very much. All right. Next on our agenda is item number eight, eight, and this is a recognition of newly appointed boards and commission members. And so I will, Mayor Portem has agreed to come up with me, and we're going to hand out certificates of appointment and pins for everyone who's here tonight. We know that there are several who could not make it tonight, but we will be here with these. They'll get sent to them in some way or another. So Mayor Portem, would you like to join me in the front? I'll call up your names, and if you want to come forward. First one is Alliance for Commerce in Inglewood, Tyler Hood. It's a, it's a regular appointment. Tyler's here. Next is our Board of Adjustment and Appeals. We have Randall Friesen is a reappointment. Andy Taylor is a reappointment. And then Kristin Schleodt is regular. Is Kristin here? And the Cultural Arts Commission, we have Laura Bernero as a regular appointment. Clarice Ambler is a regular appointment. Clarice. And then Mark Hessling as an alternate. And Dustin Trevino is our youth appointment. Next is our Election Commission. Deborah Ward is our regular appointment, and she's here. Historic Preservation Commission is Jason O'Brien as a regular appointment. Jason here? And we have several as Keep Inglewood Beautiful. First is Charles Pharoah, a regular appointment. And Annie Barrow as a regular appointment. Michael Chisholm as a reappointment. And then Jennifer Heller as a reappointment, and Keely Sugden as a reappointment. Usually our reappointment folks are so, have been so busy, they don't come back the second time to get another pin. The Malley Center Trust Fund, Joseph Demore is a reappointment. Thank you. Our Non-Emergency Retirement Board, James Woodward is a reappointment. I didn't see him tonight. And with Planning and Zoning Commission, we have Adam Willis, who's a regular appointment. Kate Fuller is also appointed as an alternate to this board. And then Carolyn Marshall is a regular appointment, and we know she was going to be out of town Police Pension Board, Deborah Ward, again, is a regular appointment. Thank you for serving twice. Then our Public Library Board is Maria Hatta, I think, Hota, if I checked correctly, a And Sarah Harkness as well, it's a regular appointment to library. And then Scott Gilbert is a reappointment again. We have two reappointments to the Transportation Advisory Committee. Patrick Lewis. And Chris Diedrich. We have a Water and Sewer Board reappointment, John Moore. And then a regular appointment to Urban Renewal Authority, Justin Whip. Thank you. So these boards and commissions are critical to our functioning as a city and with council getting advisement. And I appreciate those who are taking the time, both now and will in the, in the future with those that are newly appointed. We appreciate all the time that you give, and we are still working on how to make these appointments be the best possible. As you could hear tonight, we have some things going on that we're trying to make sure we get optimal experiences for everyone. So appreciate again your willingness to serve the city of Inglewood. All right, our next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda, item number nine. Can I get approval for Consent Agenda items? Mayor Portem.
Actually, can I just ask a question there? I want to, actually, I want to pull nine C4. And then I just have a couple of questions on the other ones, but...
Okay. Nine C4 is pulled. Is there anybody else who wants to pull one? All right. So, oh, councilmember Questa?
Pardon me. I did answer that question here. Pardon. I'm all set.
Okay, all right, great. So Mayor Portem, is it a quick question, or should we just pull it?
No, it's, actually, they're just quick questions, I believe. It is on nine C1, the purchase of swimming pool chemicals. And is this interim city manager? Are these questions for you? What year on the ERA, the, what is that, earned reduction? We did it, we did an assessment.
Are you asking, when was the year that we did the assessment?
Yes, what was the year that we did the assessment? And will we do, will we do the comparisons again? Do you know what I'm asking?
I'm afraid I'm not quite clear.
Okay, let me see. Let's go ahead and pull it. Nine C, it'll be pretty simple.
All right, nine C1, we will pull. All right, could I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda items nine B1, nine B2, nine B3, then nine C2 and nine C3?
I move to approve those. You need me to go through them?
No, that's fine. I just...
I'll second that.
All right, great. Please vote.
Oh, no, no.
All votes are made cast, but the record shows seven aces.
All right, so we'll start with nine C1. Mayor Portem, so this is staff recommend city council approve our resolution, the purchase of swimming pool chemicals for the Recreation Center in Pirates Cove. Recreation Program Facility Supervisor Brad Anderson is here to hopefully answer your questions. Mayor Portem kicks it off.
Okay, so it's expense reduction analysis. The very first reason that we're using chem, it was the only company to submit a quote for the various chemicals when the city went through the expense reduction analysis. Was that just last year, or was that a couple of years ago?
It was, I believe it, it went through 2017 is when that was completed.
Okay, so if it went through in 2017, do you remember what the terms were for the expense reduction analysis? We paid 50%? Was that correct for...
And I don't have that information in front of me, no.
Okay, so.
If I may, um, my understanding of that contract, um, with the expense reduction analyst is that we owed them a portion of any savings that they identified.
And was that for a two-year period?
Correct.
And so this would be the first year that we do it with the, the savings will be ours?
Correct.
And so my question is, will we be, um, assessing that again, whether it's still?
My understanding is no. We're moving forward without that.
Okay, this year, but in the future, will we reevaluate whether we're getting the best, um, cost for our money?
Well, always with all of our purchases, but we're not using that particular company or that particular program to, to continue looking for, um, cost savings in the city.
Okay, and so that program is completely completed?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, that was my question on that one.
Could we have a motion to nine C1?
I move to approve agenda item nine C1, purchase of swimming pool chemicals.
Second.
All right, please vote.
All votes being cast, but the record shows seven ice.
Thank you.
And the next items, thank you, next item is nine C4. This is, uh, staff recommend city council approve by motion a contract between the city of Inglewood and MV Transportation Corporation for the 2019 management operation and maintenance of the Inglewood Trolley. The contract amount is $399,120. Uh, interim city manager, Hargrove is here to explain.
Unfortunately, Mr. Burkle had to be out of town, so he asked me to step in and answer any questions for you. I've tried to do my homework, so let's see whether I can answer your questions.
Okay, and I think the questions are pretty simple because I, I think they're, they are answered in here, but I just wanted to make sure. Are we anticipating that we will be reimbursed 80% of the contract and fuel costs in 2019?
Absolutely.
So really then it's not, we have to pay the 399,192, but RTD will reimburse us 80%.
Correct.
And, and so that will leave us a cost of approximately $78,000.
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Berentine.
Do, I just found the financial piece of it a little odd, the way that it's worded for the 80% because I believe that it, there was an amount put into the budget and so I'm not sure whether it's the 78,000 or whether it's 80%.
Well, the, the city budgeted for the full amount under expense and hope, well, plan on getting the 80% reimbursement as a revenue. So the budget line that is listed for the 399 is, is the full amount of the contract, but not the full amount that we're expecting to pay after RTD reimburses this.
Okay, and we knew about the amount of the contract when we were budgeting?
Correct.
Okay, so I, I guess it's just kind of the wording because then somebody, you know, in having a conversation that I assured them that we don't just put percentages in there and then leave the money, the money that it's going to be the percentage of up in the air until some later date. So it was just kind of the way that it was put together, uh, with that wording made it a little, seemed a little vague, like we had, whatever the contract was, we were going to pay 80%, but we knew we had that in the budget for the amount of the contract. We were anticipating this amount.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
And my understanding is that RTD has budgeted that amount. Uh, we just have to finalize the IGA.
Okay.
Finalize the reimbursement to the city.
And the other, when I was looking through this, I do not believe that during the conversations that the extension of the time was, uh, already known at the time that we did the contract or was that after?
That was afterwards. That's an agreement that RTD, um, worked out with us as a one-year pilot program.
Okay, and there was no additional cost then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Martinez.
I'm just really glad to see this before us. This is a wonderful service to our community and I'm really happy to see the hours expanded. I know a lot of folks, uh, really have asked to, um, expand the hours later into the evening, particularly in the summer for our concerts, so, um, happy to see this extended hours.
Councilmember Martinez, would you like to make a motion to approve?
Yes, I move to approve 11C4, contract for Inglewood Trolley Services.
Second. Great, thank you.
Nine C4, can we correct that?
Nine C4.
Nine C4.
Yep, thank you. Any further comments? All right, please vote.
All votes being cast, but the record shows seven ice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, agenda item 10 is public hearings. We have none. Uh, agenda item 11, ordinances, resolutions and motions. 11C, the resolution and motions, first one is application for a VALE grant. The, this is V-A-L-E. Uh, the police department is recommending that city council approve a resolution authorizing the police department to apply for and accept funding up to the amount of $22,110 from the victim assistance and law enforcement grant. Here to present is Deputy Police Chief Sam Watson. It's all right. All jealous, we'd like to stretch our legs too.
Good evening, Sam Watson, Deputy Police, Police Chief for the Police Department. Uh, we are recommending the city council approve a resolution authorizing the police department to apply for funding up to the amount of $22,110 from the victim assistance and law enforcement grant. This VALE grant finances approximately 40% of the salary for the victim witness advocate position, which is assigned to the Inglewood Municipal Court. The victim witness advocate provides services for victims of domestic violence. Council has approved the application for an acceptance of this grant since 1990. If accepted, we will return seeking approval of an IGA in order to accept these funds.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the council? Mayor Portem Russell.
This is not really a question, it's just a typo correction. I believe the sixth, let's see, the sixth whereas, it should be 2018, um, instead of 2017 VALE grant.
Where? All of them are the same and then on that one, it isn't. It's 2017 and then 2018 on the same line. Did you see?
Okay, we'll check.
Right, the, the sixth whereas.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a motion to approve?
I move to approve, um, the application for the VALE grant.
I'll second. Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, please vote.
All votes being cast, but the record shows seven ice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is agenda, agenda item 11-2, OpenGov in Warkiva proposal through the SHI International State Contract. City staff recommends city council approve motion, OpenGov and software proposal through the SHI International Colorado State Contract. And here to present is Director Maria Sabato.
Good evening, council. Uh, city staff recommends council approve by motion, the OpenGov in Warkiva software proposal through the SHI International Colorado State Contract. Warkiva subcontractor of OpenGov and you have familiarity with OpenGov. We use this, uh, system to create transparency of our budget and our expenditures right now. Uh, this software was selected as an optimal source vendor. We did research on somewhat similar, uh, products that are offered by other organizations. The costs were much higher or they did not provide, uh, the capability to link to our current financial system, Tyler New World. Um, the two systems that we looked at were, um, products of Adobe, PDF Element and Quark. And Quark specifically was, uh, a publishing platform that was over four times the cost of what's included in this. Um, we did not go out to bid because there was a state contract through SHI. Uh, so a little bit more about the product. It's a cloud-based publication software to be used in creating the budget book that we currently do manually and also our comprehensive annual financial publication or CAFR documents. This is a three-year contract, uh, with a total cost of $81,000 and I should correct that. It's a one-year contract with the option to renew for two years. Uh, it, the cost is $37,000 in the first year. There is an implementation fee and then it's $22,000 ongoing for both the budget and the CAFR. Um, as you know, the budget book, um, and the CAFR documents are very important resources for the financial transparency and they detail the city's financial and non-financial information. Uh, these documents are used internally by city staff and then also council and also externally by, uh, the citizens. Both are very labor-intensive and particularly the budget book, if changes are made throughout the budgeting process, oftentimes it requires a change to be made in three, four, five Word or Excel documents, which can lead to errors unfortunately. And with the volumes of changes that we make throughout the budget season, it's, it's difficult and time-consuming. We have observed the product. We had a demo done. In fact, we invited many other municipalities to join us who also use Word documents and Excel files to make up their budget books. They also expressed an interest in this particular product, um, not only again because of, uh, the time factor involved putting together the book, but also, um, the accuracy factor. And I will say, um, you know, looking at the product where I think the most benefit will come to us, um, beyond the accuracy is also that we will be able to spend more time with analysis and answering questions specifically related to the budget, which is truly how we should be spending our time, quite frankly. Uh, again, the city is selecting, um, this from the state's vendor list as it's part of the cooperative bidding, bidding process as prescribed by the National Association of the State Procurement Officials. And I'm, um, just looking for a motion to approve this tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions to begin? Portem Russell.
Um, was this in the budget?
Yeah, well, it's part of, it's not in our finance budget, it is in the, um, IT budget as part of the maintenance software.
Okay, and so it says in here that the 2019 cost will be offset by not filling a vacant position in the finance department. Um, who was it that left?
So if you recall, when I was hired, I was the deputy, uh, finance director. Uh, I don't have plans to replace that position.
Oh, so you vacated that position?
I did.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. I think the solution makes a lot of sense, especially for the, the items that you mentioned, the accuracy and time savings for your department. I think that, that's great. Um, in 2019, the cost is $37,000 and then you said in 20 and 2021, you would have the options, um, to add, is that additional support and help putting the books together?
Oh, no, it's, um, an option to renew the contract. So the cost to use the cloud-based system is $22,000 annually. So in the first year, we'll pay the $22,000, but also we would have the implementation fee that we would be paying.
So, and we would be planning to spend this, um, the $22,000 each year?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve 11C2, the OpenGov in Warkiva proposal through the SHI International State Contract.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Not, please vote.
All votes being cast, but the record shows seven ice.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you're here for the next one, I believe, so.
If I may, can I also thank a member of my staff?
Absolutely.
I'd like to, to thank Jenny Nolan for doing a lot of the research on this and she stayed tonight in case there were additional questions, so I really appreciate her effort on this.
Thank you, appreciate that. And stay there because the next item is 11C3, which is 2019 Fee and Rate Schedule Resolution. Staff recommend city council approve the attached 2019 Fee and Rate Schedule through resolution. Uh, and again, Maria Sabato is here to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Um, if you recall, uh, we joined you last week, I believe. Well, actually, no, I take that back. What day was it? I have to look at my schedule. January 22nd, sorry. The weeks just go by so quickly. Uh, we came to you with the fee and rate schedule during a study session, but tonight we're here to ask you through resolution to approve the fee and rate schedule. I did note in the memo that I provided to you that based on your feedback during the study session, there was one modification to the new and changes in fees to revert back to the, um, utility service, uh, request fee for red tags back to the $5 and also the door tag versus a mailing that would cost $15. I believe that was the one recommendation through the study session that was made. So you would be approving, um, the new fee and rate with that change in it. So I wanted to point that out.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Berentine has a question.
Could you, could you point that out where that is? Uh, what I'm looking at that I think is confusing is that the penalty, delinquent bills, late fees inside cities, a one-time charge of the bill for 5% of, not $5. So I, I kind of, I'm not sure where you're seeing that and that it's going to 2.5%. So it's not a percentage currently for the bill unless I'm reading the wrong line. I mean, what, uh.
The verbiage you gave was correct.
I'm seeing where you're looking at that right now. And I do see that.
Um, what you stated, I believe, is correct in that there's currently $5, but I wasn't, I don't know.
Correct. And I am going to look at Jenny Nolan for help on this.
See, it was good you came.
I know.
Would you like to please step to the microphone and introduce yourself so everyone knows?
Because I will say that the copy that I looked at, it did have it correctly, so I'm wondering if it got loaded incorrectly.
No, that's, I believe that's a separate fee. That is just the, um, penalty fee on, on the, um, actual bill that's passed due.
So I'm going to beg for, okay, so we did not make the change. So actually, it's included in the body. It's not a new or change. So we moved it back to where it was in.
Currently, right now, I do not believe that there is a 5% charge, uh, late charge to anybody who is delinquent or late for their billing.
What, what Jenny is saying, so I apologize for the confusion.
Sure.
The item that I was talking about is not specific to this item. This is indeed a new fee. What I was referring to changing is the $5 fee, um, with the request fee in the red tags that is currently an existing rate. So it's not included in the first two pages of this document. It's included where it belonged in the back because it was an existing fee already.
Could you tell me where that, where the $5 one is?
Sure. So, um, of course I don't have a page number. If you just bear with us for just one moment.
It's going to be the fourth page from the back.
Under utilities, sorry. We can sing in unison too. Utilities, service request, red tags administered. It won't be administered by mailing, it'll be a $5 door hanging. So, yes, so it's, um, four pages from the back.
I see, I see it now.
Okay.
That there's now a $5 charge and it's being stated that it's a $5 charge for the door hanging, whereas before what was on that document was that there is a late charge of $5, which would mean that this utility charge, which I don't think came to us before for a percentage, also would end up being an increase to the late fee. So there was no charge before listed for $5 for hanging it. It was listed that there was a $5 late fee that would be added to your bill and now what's here on, I think the first page of the proposed new increased fees is a huge difference, uh, that not that there's going to be a 5% charge on the outstanding bill balance.
Okay, I do not have a copy of what was presented on January 22nd. I'd like an opportunity to look that up because I do not believe we added a new one here. I think they both were included on the previous one. I can't say for certain. I'd like an opportunity to look to see. But if there's still a question as to whether or not this exists or should exist, that's a whole other matter, right?
If, if I go with what you said at the beginning, that there wasn't the intention to go ahead and remain, keep the current late fee as it is currently, then it's $5 and not 5% of the bill. That I would agree, agree with. The other would be an increase that I think is inappropriate.
Councilmember Questa.
This is the one that caught my attention too. The way that I'm reading it, and I'm just looking at that percentage, um, on outstanding balance, that the current rate is 2.5%, the outstanding bill balance and effective 119, we're proposing that would go to 5%. Um, there might be some folks that just are not paying their bill and have the resources to do it, but I still think that there's a fair amount of folks out there that are unable to pay their bill, uh, because they, they don't have the resources and they're putting together what money they can to do so. And I hate putting another 2.5% on those folks. I do wonder too, what do we really collect over the course of a year on the extra 2.5% for the city? What's our gain versus the burden we might, um, put on some families that are really just trying to, uh, get their bills paid and, and you know, get their utilities caught up? Uh, that one gives me a lot of apprehension and probably enough that I, I won't support this increase with, with that, uh, increase on the delinquent bill. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Portem Russell.
And I had those same concerns, but the other thing that I saw is it is. And I had those same concerns, but the other thing that I saw is it is inside-city only. Is there a grace period on the due date? I mean, I've never noticed.
Remind council that we're in a question time right now, so all of the questions, let's get them out.
I am not sure of that answer. It's something that I would have to research. I apologize, but I don't know that answer.
Okay, thank you.
Right, Councilmember Berentine also has another question.
I would like to have some more information on the one-time charge. What Councilmember Questa said is that this document says that there's currently a rate of 2.5%. I'm not, I'm not aware of that, and the way the document reads is that the proposed fee or rate increase, column number, second from the right, proposed fee or rate increase effective on 1-1-2019, would be a 2.5. I realize whether that's the difference of it or whether we're initiating it, but I would just get a little bit more information on how we're handling the one-time charge bill of 2.5%, how that's being enforced, whether that's in the lifetime of somebody's home, what's the one-time, because I haven't talked to anybody that realizes that there's any 2.5% assessment being done on the amount of the bill at this time. Only the $5, that's what the tag says, is you have a late charge added to your bill of $5, not 5% or 2.5. So if we could, we'd have to have a little bit more information on this. I'm not comfortable passing that.
Can I address?
Yep, please do.
In response to the earlier question?
Mm-hmm.
So Jenny kindly pulled up the information that was shared at the study session on January 22nd. The one-time charge was included. The current rate is 2.5% of outstanding bill balance, and at that time, utilities was proposing the one-time charge per bill, 5% of outstanding bill balance. So that is not new from the 22nd. One of the reasons that we're bringing forth the fee rate schedule in such detail, and we're planning to post it, is so that we can eliminate any question, you know, regarding the fees that we're asking. So as we become aware of them, that they're not, you know, listed, we put them on here. So I can't speak to whether or not this was on a schedule that the public has seen. I'd have to research that, but it was on the 22nd document, so that is not a change. The change was actually a couple, like maybe six or seven lines down, where we had a service request, red tags, administered by mailing, which was previously a $5 door hanging. Tom was with us that night, proposed a $10 increase to $15, but it would be administered by mailing versus a door hanging. So what we've done is we've removed that, based on the feedback that you gave us, and we've put it in the back as the $5 door hanging for the red tag-only service request, not a penalty for a delinquent bill, which is the other item.
I think there might have been some mis, I'll just clarify it. I was at the Water and Sewer Board meeting.
Councilmember Berentine, is this time for questions? Let's move a motion, and then we can have a discussion.
I am asking the question.
Okay, great.
At the Water and Sewer Board meeting, the red tag piece of it was brought up. I don't remember anything about the 5%. I'm not questioning that, the document, what I'm questioning is that I don't think that it's been implemented. So I need to know whether they have even been doing that previously. If they have not been enforcing it, then it would be a much bigger increase and a shock to the public. I appreciate you wanting to make sure there's communication. Is, do you have information on whether or not that has been enforced in the past? And to Councilmember Questa's question, can we get some information on, on how that's impacted it, which I guess would include how much we've actually collected in the past?
And we can verify, there is a late fee that is established, I believe, after 45 days, the two-day bill. And that is systematically programmed in our utility billing system. But we'll verify that rate, and if it's currently at 2.5%, what rate it is.
So let me clarify, so you're saying that this 2.5% would only go into effect after 45 days?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe a little bit more information on this, because I'm just not comfortable with it right now. Thank you. Thanks for letting me clarify, too, ladies.
Councilmember Wink has a question.
I move to approve agenda item 11C3, 2009 Fee and Rate Schedule Resolution.
Could I have a second?
Second.
All right, further discussion, council. Mayor Protem Russell.
Can we pull that one item until we get answers for that?
All right, you're making a suggestion. How about if we hear through everybody else's comments?
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, hold on. Councilmember Berentine?
I would, if the mayor Protem is making a motion to go ahead and withdraw that one piece until we can get some more information, then I'm giving a second.
Are you making a motion to do this?
Yes, I move.
Okay, you have a second? All right, now we're going to discuss whether or not we want to make this amendment to holding on the increase from 2.5% to 5% of the late charge or charge per bill. Councilmember Questa, do you want to speak to that?
You bet. And to speak to that, certainly, I would like to see it at least stay at 2.5 for now. I think there's a secondary component also, which is the turnoff fee. Right now, it stands at $15. We're increasing it $20, would push it at 35. This goes back to, you know, those folks that think, be it an individual, a family, that are, that are really scraping together their resource. If it's gone so far that you've had your power, or, excuse me, your water shut off, $20 matters. And so I hate to see $20. I don't know why we would do that to those folks. I don't know what that really does to the, what that gains for the city, as much as it might impact a particular individual or family. So that's another component of this that, and I didn't realize this was going to advance as quickly. I was going to bring that up as the conversation continued, but that was another component that I would like to see removed. So it would be a secondary motion, which I will make after we've discussed this one. So to the current motion, yes, I support keeping it at 2.5 and not increasing it.
All right. Councilmember Wink.
I as well support the 2.5%. And I'm pleased and comfortable with the level of information that our Director of Finance and Ms. Jenny, Jennifer has, have provided with us tonight. I think that it's pretty clear.
Could you clarify, you're saying that you're affirming the 2.5%, which is, it is currently, or that you're, the increase of another 2.5 to 5% is what you're supporting?
The current 2.5.
Okay, so, all right. Anyone else want to speak to this? We need to vote on whether or not we leave it at 2.5. Mayor Protem.
Okay, so if, if we're talking about leaving it at 2.5, if that was acceptable, we could withdraw that motion.
Well... Not really, because this is suggesting that it be raised.
Okay.
So we would have to amend it, amend it, I believe, right? Yeah.
Well, but I was asking to pull it totally.
The entire...
Yeah, just that one thing.
Would, would we, would you prefer, okay, I'll let city attorney respond.
Right now, you have a main motion to approve the document as presented. You have an amending motion to withdraw that specified section regarding an additional 2.5%. So by your own BOBS rules, you cannot have more than one amending motion at a time. So you have to act on this amending motion, then Mr. Questa stated he wanted to do a secondary amendment. The main motion would be approved, subject to any amendments that you have approved.
Mayor, or Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. I'd like to retract what I said earlier. I want to approve the increase of the additional 2.5%. Sorry about that.
All right, so you're just weighing in on their amendment?
Yes, correct.
All right. So any other comments about this of going from 2.5 to 5% on this? Councilmember Berentine, anything new on this?
Just two comments. I appreciate what Councilmember Questa is acknowledging, that when people have these kind of issues going on, we're trying to keep people in our community, and maybe we can visit this again in the future, if we get a little bit more information on whether it's really beneficial to the city or not, or detrimental in increasing this. But I do want a clarification, was your motion, that I seconded, to remove this mayor Protem from the...
It's still there.
Okay, thank you. I misunderstood. I thought maybe it was to just postpone it until we got more information, but that doesn't then, to my question, that doesn't prevent us, if we get more information and we find out that this is something that the city would benefit from, and that it really isn't dilutaries to, you know, any certain group that, or how many, having happened in a year, how many people are being turned off, wouldn't prevent you from bringing the increase back at another time, would it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, would you like to restate your motion, so that if we go to vote, everyone understands what we're voting on?
Okay, I am moving to pull the one-time charge of 5% totally from the rest of it. So it's, it's not in here.
And I'm still seconding it.
Right.
Okay.
All right. Any further comments? Please vote. Yes would be yes, pull it, and no would be leave it.
All votes being cast. Let the record show, five ayes and two nays, the two nays being Mayor Olson and Councilmember Wink.
All right, so back to the original motion, then. Not removed, it did pass, so it did remove. So where are we on the remainder? Councilmember Questa.
At this time, I would also move that we remove the line item pertaining to turn-off non-payment. The current fee is $15. There's an increased fee of $20, which would total it out at $35, which would be retroactively applied to 1-1-2019. Again, I would move that we remove that line of, line item as well. Thank you, Mayor.
A second. All right, further conversation? So anyone here? I want to say that I've been on the Water and Sewer Board, where we've had cases like this come up to us, and in one case, there were several of us who were concerned, because it looked like the city was going to go, actually, not only turn off, but dig up and, and really turn off in the streets some things, and we had them please stop and make sure that someone had contacted the person directly, because perhaps there was some sort of financial thing going on. And turned out that was not the case at all, it was just somebody really not wanting to pay their bills. So I'm for us figuring this out. I, I guess my question to you all would be, at what point is there some leeway to help with citizens where the issue really is of having hardship and financially helping them?
Thanks for that question. It's definitely something that I can speak to Director Brennan about, to see what accommodations we've made in the past, and we can report back.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Berentine? Panel's lighting up up here.
Pardon?
The panel is lighting up up here.
And to Councilmember Questa's point, I don't think that people just don't feel like paying their bill that will allow their water to be shut off. I don't think that it's some kind of pushback on the city. People don't generally like to have their utilities turned off just to prove a point. So I would like to get some additional information, and the fact that, once we have some additional information on how this is happening, to what population it might be happening, and if there's any other steps that we can take to mitigate that, or help or understand it better, what benefit this additional $20 is really going to do the city. You can always bring it back, and we can make a decision to go ahead and increase it then. Thank you.
Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate your point on that there are some folks that don't pay their bills, and it reaches that point. I would think that that's the smaller, that's the minority of the group, and I'd rather err that, just give the benefit of the doubt to the folks that really didn't have the resources to get their bill paid on time and want their water on, even if that means we let a few people riot on the $20 that are just being, not paying attention as issued to their bill. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. The fact here is that we do not know what, to what degree, and with what percentage of our population, payments are being made or not. And also, any fees removed or decreased today is going to equal a direct increase in the budget next year, so let's keep that in mind, and keep in mind that we don't have the raw numbers and the pure facts. We can estimate and assume all we want, but we don't know, so, yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Great. Mayor Protem Russell.
So the question that I have, it says here, turn off, and then it has non-payment. Do people actually call the city when they sell their house, or when a renter moves out? Because they, do, does the city actually turn off water when a property has been sold? And then turn it back on? Or can people just call in and change owners of the account?
If I may, this is another area of my vast expertise, you understand, but I was just talking to the billing manager in utilities, and I think the answer to your question is that it varies. If a property has changed hands, we get a lot of information from title companies about who the new owner is, and then there would be no turnoff. If a property is vacant, or there's some question about the title, which is much more unlikely, then they might, there might be a turnoff, and the party of, the owner of the record would have to pay that. But in the vast majority of times, it's just a switch of title and not a turning off of water.
Okay, so this would be literally for non-payment? And are there any rules on that? I mean, you get a 45-day grace period there, too, and that's it?
I believe the turnoff fee is probably, that period is probably a little bit longer. I don't have that number anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments?
So what I, what I thought was happening with this, and maybe that this is where we need a lot more information, was that there's quite a bit of time before anything gets turned off. Sometimes it can be as much as six months or to nine months. At least, I remember being on a Water and Sewer Board meeting one time where someone came up for a hearing, and it was an interesting situation. Now, that's not normal. I mean, that doesn't happen very often. So I would prefer to have a little heavier handed at the further end and get lighter to try and figure out what's going on with someone along the way. But I, I don't know if that's happening, and what our avenues are for that kind of interaction with our citizens that might be strapped. And I guess you probably can't tell me either, right?
I've marked down all of your questions, and I'll include that as well. If we have a trend, if we know what the circumstances were and the duration from the time that it became delinquent to actual shut off.
Yeah. Mayor Protem Russell?
I would just like to make a comment about this. It is, it's very difficult for some people, probably more likely homeowners. We had a rental property in Denver, and I notified public service and the water department that I wanted to be notified before they turned off public service, or before they turned off the water. And I forget which one it was, they, she got three notices before I ever got notified. I got notified just before they were going to shut it off. So it is very difficult when you're struggling, and especially in the economy in which we live. So I would like more information on this.
Councilmember Berentine?
Because there's both a charge to turn it off and a charge to turn it on, and so now the fee for that would, I mean, because...
There's no charge to turn it on, but to turn it off, yes, there's...
Okay, it says to turn it, to turn it on is $35.
That was, that's the new proposed for 2019, currently.
There's nothing to turn it on.
I was thinking 2018, sorry.
So, so to turn it, to turn it back on is $35, to shut it off is $35. That's $70 now, for somebody who didn't pay their bill, and before it was just the 15. So, I mean, that's a, that's a huge, that's a huge increase. So Councilmember Questa's point isn't even arguing about the turn-on-on increase of $35, which is 100% increase of $35, just to lower the turning off fee, that, that late part not, not to be that $20. So we're still garnering an additional $35, the 70, or actually $55 swing is, it's kind of steep for somebody who's in that position. I mean, to the mayor's point, I understand that we want to go ahead and have some kind of deterrent on that, but we're, we're already deterrent at $35 for them to get it back on. If they've gone far enough to have it shut off, it's going to cost them $55 more now to go ahead and deal with this situation than it did before. That's, that's substantive. That's substantive. I just wanted to point it out.
Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, and I, yeah, I was misreading that section as well, that, I wasn't acknowledging that as an additional fee, the turn on as opposed to turn off. I'm going to restate my motion, and we'll, I'll just put it forward here, and we'll see where this lands. I would motion to remove two line items, the first being the increase in the non-payment fee. Currently, the fee sits at $15. There's a proposed additional $20 increase on that $15 fee for a total of $35. In addition, there's an entirely new fee, not currently existing, which would be $35 to turn the utility back on. So the total would go from the $15 current to get it turned off and back on to $70 would be proposed for 1-1-19. And I would motion that we remove both those line items.
A second. All right, discussion. I'm, I'm actually wondering, and this is probably poor timing now, but we have to move on this one, I wonder if we should just table the entire thing? It seems like we have a lot more questions than we did at city, at study session, that are impeding some of this, so, I mean, we can vote on this, your motion one way or the other, but it seems to me like the whole thing is creating a lot of confusion, and maybe different ways of thinking that we hadn't thought about, hadn't considered before.
And I'm fine with tabling as well.
Pardon?
I'm fine with tabling as well, if we do that for Don. Regroup on this.
Okay. Councilmember Berentine?
I mean, in all fairness, when you have like eight, 10 pages of these little line items, maybe now that these questions have come up with a couple of these, it would be best to table it. I would agree with the mayor.
So, council, we would need to vote on this amendment, right now, and then go back to the original, I believe, right? Yep, that's what we'd have to do. Councilmember Questa?
May I withdraw my amendment?
Pardon?
May I withdraw my amendment?
I don't think you can. Can he, can he at this point? He can, okay. Yes, you can.
I will just withdraw the amendment.
All right.
And actually, I guess I will motion that we table this matter.
All right. So we have a second to that?
A second.
All right. So, any questions related to that? So my question to you, is this hamstringing you in any way? We can live with what we have currently until we figure this out some more?
Yes, we can.
I apologize that so many questions came up that we hadn't really probably looked at as clearly before. Do you think you have enough info from all of us of what we were, what the concerns are?
I do. For those, those three in particular, I guess I'd like to ask if there are concerns about any of the other ones, so that we can bring forth the appropriate staff member to answer those specific questions.
Makes sense. Does anybody have any that come to mind right now? Councilmember Questa?
In my review, those were the only two, and now three, that came up for me. Thank you.
I think if we're going to go through these paces again, what I would prefer is to see sort of if we can get some documentation of how many cases are we talking about, and what are the reasons for people not paying? I'm sure they're all over the map, if we do know. And then, secondly, how perhaps some examples of other cities and how they're handling this at different times. I know sometimes utilities is a major way that people show their difficulty with handling homeowner and renter. But if there's a little bit more info about why, why this amount, and what I think it will help to, whether it's an incentive, whether it's paying for staff time, that it's extra, all of those kinds of things.
Happy to try to do that.
All right, so we need to vote on the motion, which is to table this to an, do we want to name a date, or can we do an uncertain date?
I'd prefer to name a date.
Can we name a date that would be reasonable to you all? The next, let's see, our next regular meeting would be the 18th?
19th.
I'm sorry, the 19th, because it's President's Day weekend, yes. Would that be reasonable for you all to come back at that point, or do you need a different date?
No, I think that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the motion, again, would you want to restate it? Member Questa add the date to it?
Yes, the motion would be to table, and let me get the exact title, would be to table the 2019 fee and rate schedule resolution to February 19th, 2019.
And there was a second?
Member Berentine.
Mayor Berentine, all right. Any further discussion? If not, please vote.
All votes been cast. Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you.
Could I ask a clarifying question? Sabada may understand this. Is council asking us to bring back the resolution as presented tonight, but just providing additional information on those points that you asked, or to take those items out? That's unclear to me.
Councilmember Berentine, yes? The answer, I guess?
I would think it might be necessary to go ahead and have some information presented at study session that's been clarified prior to this coming forward again. That's what I would think. If you're just thinking, bringing this back again, I mean, it's not going to resolve anything, so I would assume we got some information and had an opportunity.
My, my understanding of the, the vote was that it was coming back to a regular meeting. Am I correct?
Right, that's what we did. So we'd have to put it on study session either next week, or...
I guess because there was, I guess that's what was my understanding, because there were questions asked, and the mayor clarified some of the issues that had been brought up, so I guess I just made an assumption, I apologize, that we would get additional information that would answer those questions.
I mean...
I don't know, I don't know how the vehicle is, that's just what I was wondering. I know she has that question. Are we bringing it to a study session, and do we have to say that?
I think what she's asking is a really important question, so do we have, will we have enough information to make a decision that night? If they bring it forward the same way that it is, then you might not agree with it, but you could have all the information you have.
May I answer?
Yeah.
I think it would be awfully challenging to have a vote the night that we're bringing forth information. So my recommendation was going to be to bring it forth to a study session prior to the 19th, and have those specific...
All right, so you're able to do that on the 11th, then?
We will work towards that.
I should have worked backwards on our study session information. Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, Mayor. This does seem somewhat tidy to me. It's three line items, and I know that there's some research to be done on your side, and I certainly appreciate staff doing that, but I don't need a great deal of information to make a determination one way or the other. So I would hope that this isn't an extremely long, extensive conversation when we get it into study session, if we're able to shoehorn it into the 11th, I believe it is. Thank you, Mayor.
It'll be a tight meeting on the 11th, because we have a full agenda already on the study session, but, you know, we can also supply some information in written form to council, whatever you, you prefer. I'm just, my understanding is the, the motion, or the, the decision that council has made is to bring it back on the 19th, and I think we're all sort of suggesting maybe a study session at some point would make more sense.
Councilmember, or Mayor Parton Russell, I think was next.
Actually, I think that this discussion tonight has been very helpful, and if the information comes back at the next meeting, two weeks from now, that if we decide at that time we want to cut them back, it would be a much easier discussion than now, once we have the answer to the questions.
Councilmember Martinez?
I just, I don't think we needed a second study session on this. We had a whole study session on this, and it sounds like some members of council just want a little bit more information, so I would prefer not to have a whole additional study session for this.
Councilmember Sierra?
Just making an observation here, on the three line items that we're talking about, even if we come back with a little bit more information, that there's only five people that are being affected, or 10 people being affected. From some of the conversation, it sounds like even five's going to be too much, 10's going to be too much. So I almost feel that maybe the additional information would be overkill. I think, just the sense that I'm getting is that it may be a fee that we don't want to put on the citizens that are in that situation. So, I, I know that we're going to bring it back on the 19th, we may talk about it during city council, but I think it just may be a situation that we're just going to agree that we don't want that additional fee for people that are in that situation, because it's not just this. If they're in that situation, there's other bills that they're also facing, a couple of these, so, just for thought, I guess, in a sense.
Yeah. Councilmember Berentine?
I think it's the cumulative effect of it that we're starting to realize, and, you know, we got rid of the $10 additional for the red tag door that was proposed, then the 35, then the 20. I mean, there must be some reasoning behind a $65 increase like that. So I guess, Councilmember Sierra, what I'm willing to listen to is that if this is truly recouping our costs, or whether it was meant to just be a little bit more punitive, who knows, or maybe deter things, and if they believe it's going to deter people, what evidence they have for that, and how it would benefit us. So I actually, I'm against raising these, but if the city has some logic behind this, I would like to hear for these three items, and I think for three items, like Councilmember Questa said, they can handle it pretty, we can handle it pretty straightforward. If it is punitive, then I would agree with you. I don't want to see the increases go forward. If there truly is some, some tie to some cost here, then I would like to hear that argument.
All right, thank you. I'm going to move us, did you get what you needed?
Thank you.
I'm going to move us on to the next agenda item, which is 11C4, executive search firm contract approval. Staff recommends city council approve by motion of a professional services contract with GOV-HR USA to undertake the search for the new city manager, and presenting his, answering questions is interim city manager Dorothy Hargrove.
I would just entertain any questions. The contract is before you in your contract, and I, I mean, in your packet, and I assume that there are no surprises. They agreed to our terms and are willing to undertake the search on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I move, I move to approve the executive search firm contract with GOV-HR USA.
Second.
Second, great. Any further discussion? Please vote.
All votes been cast. Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you, looking forward to that. 11C5, code enforcement advisory committee assessment. This is an approved by motion, an eight-week assessment period for the code enforcement advisory committee. Here to help answer questions is interim city manager Dorothy Hargrove.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, before we begin, we're at 9 o'clock, we've gone over two hours. May we take a five-minute break?
Right after...
This could be, I think, a longer discussion.
Can we do it, oh, you think we're going to need one?
Are we on CAC yet?
Okay, you're probably right. Would we take a little break? How about five minutes, make a run for the border? We're going to recess for five minutes, and then we will be back for the conversation on 11C5. We could get council back to their chairs? Appreciate it. Thank you, Councilmember Questa, for making the evening a little saner. We'll continue on to 11E5, the code enforcement advisory committee assessment period.
Thank you all. In response to a consensus of council, we had drafted an assessment period recommendation. We are asking council to approve by motion an eight-week assessment period for the code enforcement advisory committee. The idea is that during that time, we will undertake a study and discussions about the legal and procedural issues brought forward, and discussions about this committee, and come back to council with any specific recommendations at the end of that period, in brief.
Thank you.
I move to approve 11C5.
I'll second that movement.
All right, further discussion? We have a motion and a second?
Yep.
Any discussion? Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, Mayor. Anytime that I'm not going to support something, feel like I'm providing reasoning and articulate why, I, I think that there's a collective agreement amongst those on the board and everybody up here, that we do need to take a look at the code, how it aligns with charter, even kind of the policy and bylaw that we have beneath that code, and I think that that does stretch across the board. Now, I know that that is a very time-consuming process to do that every, for every board and committee. I'm not sure that this hiatus, and I believe it's set at eight weeks currently, that, that after eight weeks...
um, so, 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 um, so,
reads it, and that is that there's a violation of the charter because somebody films the code enforcement. I maintain that they are public servants, and a public servant, you can film them as you desire to. There is no limitation on that, nor do I believe that that is a violation of the charter for either a council member or a member of any of the boards or commissions. I believe that some of the information that Coen Dickerson brought forward is accurate, that our rules apply to the council members and councilmember committees and not them. And until we clear this up, have a little bit better understanding of what's really a violation, because I disagree with them. And since there's not consensus on this council, in my opinion, or anything that proved that this is a violation of the charter, or anything illegal that they did, or anything untoward, I need to have that cleared up. The other issue was that we also met on this on a study session, and this council agreed to not go forward with a pause. And then in kind of a got-you moment, we're going to keep looking at this until we find something, then it got brought back again. And we've talked about them quite a bit. I've had, I'm kind of very, very concerned that all of a sudden there's been comments being made about removing two of the members when that's, when that's not been discussed or even brought up previously. And so I think this has kind of taken a sideways motion. It was my understanding that a person attended a meeting, disrupted the meeting so much that they were unable to call the meeting to order, and they asked the person to be removed. We have not asked this board what happened. A great portion of that, that asked for the removal of that person is not on the tape, is my understanding. And prior to that, the meeting prior to that, that person talked for 15 minutes and was heard by that board, and they respected their opportunity to speak, and she had her opportunity to talk. So until we have an opportunity to take a citizen court and ask them what they think happened, instead of all the conjecture, I think that this is ill-advised.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councilmember Martinez? Sorry, couldn't see it.
We've spent a lot of time talking about this group and what to do, and it's council's responsibility to help this group be successful. And it's up to us to help them align on their purpose and parameters and give them some alignment and direction. And I think, I think we owe that to them and to our community. We obviously need to do some policy cleanup to make things clear to them and give them guidance so they can be effective and efficient with their time. They're citizen volunteers. They give us a lot of their energy and work, and we need to do what we can to help them be successful, which includes, which was mentioned earlier tonight, improving the relations between that group and staff. So I'm supportive of this tonight. We've spent a lot of time talking about it. We need to do what we can to help them be as successful as they can, so I will be supporting this tonight.
I will also weigh in, because I think that councilmember Wink is correct. There were several of us that wanted to move this forward, and a lot of things said about whether we call it a pause, a hiatus, or whatever, and it's not shutting it down. For me, it's not punitive at all. I would, if I were sitting on a board as a citizen and had anybody questioning whether we were doing, what we were supposed to be doing, whether it was according to charter or not, whether or not it was adding to the value of the city in trying to remedy some of the code issues, I would want to take a stop, but I guess that's me. And that's what I would like. I think it would be the best way to honor the folks that are giving them their time, engage them in some conversations, I am sure, within the eight weeks that we have, but not meet to do what they think they're supposed to do at this point. I do believe, whether it's a charter violation or not, I do believe there are varying views about what people think they're supposed to be doing on this code committee, because we heard tonight that the members came up and said that if they're not meeting, there will be a vacuum and no code enforcement will happen. Well, that, that's really unfortunate if that, if they view that their only role, that they're, they're the only ones doing code enforcement. That, we're hoping that we can remove that kind of burden on them and make sure that what they're doing is in for, is giving advisory to us to help make changes that are needed for the 21st century. So I will be in favor of this as a way to move us forward, as a positive way if people want to view that negatively. I, it's unfortunate to me. It's a positive statement to figure out how to best help these folks serve us and for us to serve them and for all the citizens to have their voices heard in that process. I don't take this lightly at all. This is, I just, I think it's an important step to make things work for everyone better. So. Looks like we have no more comments. Please vote.
All votes being cast. Let the record show, four ayes and three nays. Three nays, Mayor Protem Russell, councilmember Berentine, and councilmember Questa.
Thank you, counsel. We will proceed with the research and the gathering of information and report back to you as promised.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is agenda item 12, which is general discussion, mayor's choice. Under, under, we have a posting for an executive session motion. I move to go into an executive session for the discussion of specialized details of security arrangements or investigations under CRS Section 24-6-402. A second.
Second that.
All right. Are there any further clarifications anyone needs? Councilmember Questa?
Thank you. And I know that I'm the broken record on this, but I do feel like, speaking of this one again, I'm not going to support strictly because I don't think that we disclose enough here. Saying security arrangements is far too broad, and I think that's something that critical, because I imagine it's going to be security arrangements regarding a public place. That could be schools, that could be this chamber, that could be wherever. We could provide a little bit more specificity of where we think that there's a security concern to the public. Thank you.
Councilmember Wink?
I do feel, thank you, Mayor, that the information provided is quite a bit more succinct than, or indirect and clear than maybe we've seen before when we had some pause. And so I'm comfortable with what's printed on the agenda in moving to executive session.
Councilmember Berentine?
Given that we're given the directive when we go into an executive session, that if we go off topic, that we are supposed to protest that, and we're advised that that protest will be for the record, I don't think we have enough information here for me to be able to make that determination. I would have to agree with councilmember Questa. I cannot support this.
Any other comments? Mayor Protem Russell?
I agree that there is not enough information here to support going into executive session, so I too will not be supporting this.
Given that, we would not have a two-thirds majority. City attorney, is there any more information you could give us that would be useful, do you think, in our decision here?
First, you still have to take the, there's a motion.
Right.
This is not my executive session, so I should not be the one speaking to it.
Okay. It's actually.
Yes, exactly. I would add the additional information that the focus of the security arrangements are for this building.
All right. So it's confined to this building?
Yes.
Okay. Given that, are there any other further comments from folks or questions? Councilmember Questa?
Thank you. I appreciate the additional information, and I think that that's good for the public to note as well. Hopefully, we can update tonight's agenda also, so that people look back on this, they can see that the security discussion was specifically for this building.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Berentine?
Does this executive session, would it be discussion of any ordinance or further action by this council for any kind of legislation?
No. You're asking the attorney, yeah, kicking out this email attendance and the information's coming out. So if we. At least close to most of the activity. If you. Out, I can't remember what it is, but just so you know that. So if you can let her know, we'll have to make a, you know. Just a, one quick other thing. I think some of you have been probably. Of the changes that they want to make to air patterns, we talked about those. Happened that some cities know about that we tend not to always know about. Jason Crow to his constituents, which he. Tronic form so that you can see the lawyer was very supportive of the city. Have, certainly have some of our staff there. The decision-making processes that could impact the quality of life and noise with. And there was one more thing tonight that was. Mr. Stephen Ward talked about. Think there are things that are said that go, like he. People, so I would simply ask that you think about, and it. When claims are made that are maybe to misunderstand. Whatever. And I know sometimes it's a difference of opinion. That's fine, too, but at least we get all.
Part. I have just two things. I'm passing on a. Community interest. They're hoping to have a community information. You know, any kind of regulation would look like, what it might mean. Please watch for time and date for that. They haven't said that yet. There's, there's more coming.
Thank you.
So know that I will be on vacation from the, not the. Kenny Brown will be in charge of the city in my absence, so.
I've completed a. The boards and commissions handbook and. Merrily Dorothy, to do. Date, but staff is really overwhelmed at this moment, and they could not. That they go into your packet. And the reason is I. To the end of where staff can help make. Upper dam. So if you want. Move on. But because they are documents, I really wanted to give you. One last thing is the ethic. And it's one that was passed in 2006, but. Court decision in which the district court upheld. The state ethics board, the. Municipalities, even though the constitutional amendment that's passed by the. Specifically gone after home rule cities. We do. The court judge. Our resolution is a valid. I want to send that to you. I'm, I'm pulling that out. Commissions are not aware that it. To be made more generally known. Then I'm going to ask that we put it into an ordinance format and. Then update it. These are the three documents that you'll be getting from me in the next day or two.